Good evening and thank you very much for joining us tonight at our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson, here. Bray, Brown.
Here.
Johnston, Moore.
Here.
Orr.
Here.
Blatt.
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you remain standing for an invocation that will be offered by Tony Seiko from the Portnoy Sanga.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
These are the words of the Buddha on kindness. This is to be done by one skilled in aims who wants to break through to the state of peace. Be capable, upright and straightforward, easy to instruct, gentle and not conceited, content and easy to support, with few duties, living lightly with peaceful faculties, masterful, modest, and no greed for supporters. Do not do the slightest thing that the wise would later censure. Think. Happy at rest, may all beings be happy at heart. Whatever beings there may be, weak or strong, without exception, long, large, middling, short, subtle, blatant, seen and unseen, near and far, born and seeking birth. May all beings be happy at heart. Let no one deceive another or despise anyone anywhere, or through anger or irritation wish for another to suffer. As a mother would risk her life to protect her child, her only child, even so should one cultivate a limitless heart with regard to all beings.
Members of council and Mayor Blatt, thank you very much for your generous gift of service to the people of Pocatello.
We will move on to Agenda Item Number Three as a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the September 8, 2016 study session and the September 27, 2016 executive session. B. Payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of September 2016. Joyce, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Pocatello. Payroll and material claims for the month of September is the report that I'm presenting tonight. And payroll and material claims totaled $7,217,446. Payroll related claims, $3,518,137. We had 700 employees at the end of the month. We had changes in filled positions, a decrease of one in the halftime position, an increase of three in the part-time position, and a decrease of 47 in the seasonal part-time, for an overall decrease of 45 filled positions at the end of the month. Vendor claims totaled $3,699,309. I've highlighted the vendor claims, which totals 10,000 or more. Alliance Title and Escrow Corporation, $31,187. This was for CDBG for 540 East Popular Purchase. This is for infill acquisition. Bennett County magistrate court, $126,788. This is non-departmental, six district court support for fiscal year 2016. Century length business services, $28,498. This is the IT department phone upgrade for the city. Conrad and Bishkop Incorporated, $37,750. Street transit fuel for unleaded and diesel. ESRI Incorporated, $23,950. This is the GIS and planning departments for the GIS contract maintenance. HDR Incorporated, $84,077. Water pollution control, engineering services for the phosphorus upgrade. Idaho Asphalt Supply, $117,321. The street department, this is for road oil and the chips for chip sealing. Lucidity Incorporated, $31,701. Engineering, street, environmental science, water and water pollution control. This is the software and connection program, shared expense. Mastercraft, $30,813. Ross Park Aquatic Center, chlorine chemicals and replace and rebuild a motor. Maxwell Products, $21,282. Street department, crack seal material, $46,590 pounds. Mickelson Construction Incorporated, $93,667. Street and water for plant mix for patching and paving streets. Normont Equipment Company, $32,810. This is the street department for broom sweepers and light bars stock. Pro Builders Incorporated, $142,784. Street and WPC for the Highland Boulevard sewer project. Pro Rentals and Sales Incorporated, $20,292. Parks for rental of a mini tracks loader with bucket. Ready Service Jobber Incorporated, $25,198. Water pollution control contract application number two for the WPC lab addition. Signature Roofing, $106,655. City Hall for the roof repair. RSCI, $683,742. Water pollution control, phosphorus project contractor progress payment number 13. Weidner and Associates, $119,897. This is the fire department for firefighter turnouts, SCBA face piece, fresh shirts and other supplies. Idaho Power Company, $414,526. This is multiple funds. This is the electric utility. Wells Fargo purchase card program, $397,364. This is the September P. Card cycle with 1,275 transactions. I've listed the remaining large vendor claims for your review, and this report explains 77.04 percent of all vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I present to you the September purchase card activity. Once again, we had 1,275 transactions totaling $397,364 and 152 cardholders used their cards. I've also listed the 11 purchase agents who had monthly totals greater than 10,000, and a summary of the type of expenditures that were processed on their cards. This concludes my report. Subject to any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Agenda Item C is Airport Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Caesar Saldegato to continue his service as a member of the Airport Commission. Mr. Saldegato's term will begin October 9, 2016 and will expire October 19, 2018. D. Golf Advisory Committee Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Roger Muster to continue his service as a member of the Golf Advisory Committee. Mr. Muster's term will begin October 20, 2016, and will expire October 20, 2019. E. Historic Preservation Commission Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Paul Civis to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Jeffrey Jimenez, who resigned. Mr. Civis' term will begin October 7, 2016, and will expire August 20, 2017. F. Sister City Committee Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Peggy Johnson to continue her service as a member of the African Sister City Subcommittee. Ms. Johnson's term will begin October 21, 2016, and will expire October 21, 2020. G. Resolution Amending Pocatello Public Mayor's Youth Advisory Council Provisions. Council may wish to consider approving a resolution consolidating two resolutions into one and amending the references to local high schools, list of officers, membership number and election process. H. Council Decision Tuscan View Subdivision. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a final plat for the Tuscan View subdivision, which divides 3.09 acres into two residential lots. Zoned residential estate, RE, density subject to conditions. The proposed subdivision is a replat of Lot 12, Block 1 of Tuscany Hills subdivision, second edition, and both lots will have frontage on and be accessed by Sienna Drive. Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamations. We have one proclamation tonight that will be read by Councilmember Gary Moore. It's Fire Prevention Week.
Proclamation in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Pocatello is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Pocatello, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are greatest risk from fire, and whereas U.S. fire departments responded to 369,500 home fires in 2014, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority of all U.S. fire deaths, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result in fires in properties without smoke alarms or with non-working smoke alarms, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported house fires in half, and whereas many Americans don't know how old their smoke alarms are in their homes or how often they need to be replaced, and whereas all smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years, and whereas the age of the smoke alarm can be determined by the date of its manufacture, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm, and whereas Pocatello first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Pocatello residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week thing, "Don't wait, check the date, replace smoke alarms every 10 years," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years and determining the age of their alarms by checking the date of the manufacture on back of the alarm. Now therefore, Mayor Brian C. Blatt does hereby proclaim the week of October 9 through October 15 to be Fire Prevention Week.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Chief Gates. Very proud. Thank you for this proclamation. Very proud of our Prevention Bureau and the efforts they make. Fire Prevention Week is a longstanding tradition and one of our integral efforts towards fire prevention. You know, the old adage, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure," and truly in the smoke detectors realm, that's exactly what this is. Smoke detectors are arguably the single most, the greatest prevention effort in the last century, both in property loss and in loss of life. It's disturbing that still 84 percent of fire deaths are caused in the home. So I think that that is emphasizing how important smoke detectors are. As a fire service professional, I can't emphasize enough the importance of the smoke detectors, and so don't wait, update, and then make sure that your batteries are changed twice a year, and thank you again. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five as a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On October 13, a 9:00 a.m. study session immediately followed by an executive session. October 20, 6:00 p.m. is a regular council meeting. Other events, cybersecurity class Tuesdays at 7:00 p.m. during the month of October at the Marshall Public Library. October 10, garbage and recycle pickups will continue on schedule for Columbus Day. City offices will remain open for this holiday. October 12, final open house, draft of the Portnoy River visioning from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Pocatello Community Charter School. Submit a design for the city's new flag. Entries will be received until December 2. Visit the website at flag.pocatello.us for more information. General election information is early in-person voting began September 26 at the New Bennett County Elections Office, 141 North Sixth, the old jail. Voting hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Last date of vote early is November 4. Council, did we miss anything there?
Mayor?
Yes.
One item is that this, I believe it's Friday, isn't it? It's the 14th, month of 14, next Friday. The Historic Preservation Committee will have a evening in the cemetery at the Brady Chapel, starting at 5:30, I believe, 5:30 p.m., and they'll have a scavenger hunt to find the grave sites of notable people who have participated and helped Pocatello grow. And the first few people there will be given certificates for a free ice cream cone over at Arctic Circle, so I'd encourage all people. Interesting, a scavenger hunt?
Is it tasty treat or?
Tasty treat, whatever it is across, is tasty treat. I don't get ice cream cone there. I get hamburger, french fry. I don't want to give too much of a sales pitch for them.
That's right.
But it'd be a great opportunity to go out and have some fun with the kids.
It'd be a perfect month for it to be Friday, the 13th, to do that.
About the 14th.
It's the 14th.
Yeah, missed it by a day.
Missed it by a day. All right, thank you. Any other, anything else? All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Daycare License Denial Appeal Lloyd. Amy Lloyd will be present to appeal the decision of police department staff, which denied Ms. Lloyd a daycare's license.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Janaye Perman, licensing of the city, excuse me, the Pocatello Police Department. After careful consideration, Pocatello Police Department denied Amy Lloyd a childcare license due to her admission of committing a domestic assault. However, the domestic assault charge was dismissed on the motion of the prosecutor. Any questions?
Questions? No? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy Lloyd, and I'm here this evening to meet with all of you. Up until a few weeks ago, I had a wonderful opportunity, being employed at the Lighthouse Preschool and Daycare. I applied for a daycare license that could further my education in working with children. I was told a little later I was not allowed to obtain one due to an incident that occurred at the end of July of last 2015. I was five months pregnant when I came across a highly drunken individual. The individual I loved, I still love and is still here today because I felt was what the right choice. I would not allow a drunk person to get behind the wheel. It came to the point that I restrained him, and I called 911 myself. I needed help. I did not know at the time that it was illegal to prevent a possible DUI, a possible accident, or worse, the situation ending in that individual or others in this community being harmed or killed. The police came, the ambulance checked me and my unborn son for stress, and during that time, they helped get the inebriated person to calm down and not drive. He later went to bed, and there was no hospital trip or any injuries. I was arrested. I was taken to Portnoy Medical Center, I was five months pregnant, and checked an ultrasound to see if my son was all right. I sat in jail for three days because it was a Friday night, no court would see me until that Monday. After I appeared in court, I had his support and his family's support, and all charges were dropped and dismissed. And I'm here today if you see if I feel I'm still allowed to work with children. A job, it's not a job, but a place that I have missed every day since I've left. I really feel the spark of life beating there, and a chance to do something great for those children. A job that I loved and was taken from me because I thought I did the right thing a year ago. I ask you for your consideration of my appeal tonight, and I thank you for your time. Any questions?
Questions, council?
A short one.
Sorry for blubbering.
Not that this matters on anything. I'm just wondering if this goes your way tonight. Is there still a position there for you?
I believe so. I've spoken with Ms. Lewis, the owner of daycare, and we've talked back and forth, and she says, "We'll get you back in here. Don't you worry." So that's what she's said with me. So, and I text her earlier today. I'm like, "It is a day," so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant her a daycare license.
Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Orr. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would you meet with Janaye so you can find out what we need to get done?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Hearing Community Development Block Grant Identified Needs. This time has been set aside for council to accept testimony from citizens and organizations on any housing or non-housing community development needs they have identified. The council will also review written statements of intent to apply for Program Year 2017 Community Development Block Grant. Funding and organizations may present their proposals for funding. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Melanie Gigley, Division Manager for Neighborhood and Community Services. This needs hearing is the annual hearing as a beginning step in the application process for Program Year 2017's entitlement allocation round. It'll be our 21st year as an entitlement city. There is no federal budget right now, so we are planning on the basis of this year's allocation of $375,419. In your packet, there are statements of intent to apply from 11 different agencies, including Neighborhood and Community Services, the Fire and Transit Departments, Neighbor Works Pocatello, Aid for Friends, Bennett Youth Foundation, Family Services Alliance, New Day Products, the Senior Activity Center, Westwood Village Apartments, and the Pocatello Free Clinic. Preliminary requests are over $600,000, excuse me, including program administration. So obviously, there will be funding requests that we cannot fulfill, at least not at the level requested. When, right now, we're still working with applicants to make sure all of the requests are eligible under HUD guidelines, although at this point, it looks like they all are. Included in NCS's statement of intent to apply are our usual programs of infill housing, rehab, and sidewalks, as well as the program administration. These are ongoing activities that have benefited many, many people throughout the community over our 20 years. Final applications will be due October 24. A copy of all of those will be delivered to you at some point shortly after that for your use during the required public comment period that will start in mid-November and your eventual action at your second meeting in December. That concludes what I have for you, unless you have questions for me.
Questions?
Just one quick one. Looking at this detailed application here, it appears that most all of these are nonprofit or helping lower income, lower need. But when we get to Westwood Village Apartments, are they presently there?
No, this is a proposed affordable housing development.
Okay, and this is all for sidewalk and infrastructure?
It would be, it would be infrastructure support, yes.
And is that something that we normally consider or look at, or?
We have not had an application, in my memory, of assisting what is, in essence, a private developer, but where they are proposing affordable rental housing that will be a benefit to the low to moderate income community, it is something that can be done. But it is a first for when I've been in this position.
Yeah, and so then if we approve this item tonight, does that automatically approve funding for this?
No. Tonight, in fact, all you're doing is taking comments. The public hearing will be closed. You won't hear back on this until after the CDBG Advisory Committee has listened to all of the applications, and they'll do their best to whittle it down to the $375,000 amount. The subject then to your hearing, the final allocation amounts and changing them or not as you wish. So, no, at this point, all of this cannot happen. There's not that kind of money available.
But one last question then. When the committee meets the committee, then ultimately, when these dollars are defined by the federal government, the committee would decide then who gets funding?
What we have to do, because there has not been a budget for many, many years at the time that we're doing our work, although we still have to plan as though it will happen and so that we have our application ready when the funds are available, is they will say, "Okay, here's what we think should be funded." And then if that amount goes up, we'll add in this. If the amount goes down, we would recommend cutting this, these others. And then all of that will come to you in that same basic package, where if we get $375,000, here's what they recommend funding. If more comes in, and sometimes it's a little more, like this year's was a little more than we anticipated, here's what we suggest you do with the money. If it comes in less, which also happens, here's what we suggest you cut.
There's just a couple of flags went up with that one applicant, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
That's what I'm here for.
Thank you. Any other questions? Have you had any correspondence?
Not beyond the statements of intent that you have in your packets.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Then we'll move on to ask for testimony of any of those supporting the application.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Before we get going, we've got a new clock over here. We're pretty excited about it. It tells you how much time you have left. And so if you're wondering, that clock right there will tell you.
Awesome. Mine is going to be so short, that clock's not going to keep up.
And if something goes wrong, then it doesn't start counting down. You can talk all night.
And look, oh, now it's started.
That's not true, but you're going now.
I'm going now. Good evening. My name is BJ Stensland. I'm the Executive Director at Aid for Friends. We are a nonprofit that provides emergency shelter for homeless and social services. We've been in the community for over 32 years, continuous operations. And I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I usually don't even bring a note, but today I'm a little cloudy, so I've got a couple of notes. I'm going to ask for two different types of applications or proposals. One is for the PRT tickets that we give to our clients that are staying at the shelter. They are probably one of the best things that we can do for clients so that they can get to other services, get to appointments, and look for employment. We ask for 1,242. We match it a little over 10 percent and get about 2,400 tickets that we disperse and keep track of. And then I think in your packet, you have another larger amount. I'm going to kind of dwindle that down. This year, I think we're going to ask for that we get screens at the shelter for all of our windows. Throughout the years, screens get banged, get lost, get thrown out, and we need to have those so that we have a good quality housing conditions for the people that are staying at the shelter. We also have three interior doors that need to be replaced. Do you have any questions? And I've got a minute and 15 seconds to answer them.
You're good.
Yeah?
Thanks, BJ.
Looks good. Thank you. Anyone else in support of the application? I'm just going to tell you, you're going to have to move a little bit faster than that.
Get in line.
Because we're going to move through this, and I just about jumped at the next item here, so.
Okay.
There you go.
Terry Fredrickson, New Day Products and Resources, Mayor's City Council. It's wonderful to have the opportunity to come before you tonight. What we did this year is we fixed the front walkway of New Day. If any of you have been over there, an old shipping yard warehouse, it's gone a pretty good slant. Those in a wheelchair, considering that we serve about 100 people with disabilities in the community, is a huge concern, huge concern to have that big of a slant. It's being fixed. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get to the other side of our building, which still needs to meet those requirements, so we're continuing the grant to ask for the ability to finish the other side, also to be able to have the drain established. We get flooding in our building because of how bad the sidewalks are on the side. So it'll be ADA compliant, it'll avoid flooding, and just all around great for people in the community.
Good project.
Any questions?
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others supporting the application? Step on up.
Mayor, Council. My name is Bill Davis. My partners and I own the Westwood Village, and we're the ones that are proposing the affordable housing in that site. It's going to be the first phase of the housing. We're proposing 48 units initially, and we would like to apply for $50,000 for infrastructure and sidewalks.
Thanks, BJ.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Any others in support of the application? Now we're getting the hangup. We're getting up and moving. That's good. Now we're getting the hang of it, we're getting up and moving, that's good.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Mark Dolphus, the Executive Director at Neighbor Works Pocatello. We're in the process of putting a request together for salary support for our infill housing program and the rehab loan program. The philosophy still for our small houses that we build, the infill houses, is to build on vacant lots in older neighborhoods, and on many occasions, the blighted homes are torn down and replaced with our new developments. So we really do a lot there to uplift the neighborhood and help a low- and moderate-income home buyer. This current year, we're concentrating or we're building a home at 617 North Garfield that it's a single-level home with three bedrooms and one bathroom and the laundry upstairs. And I just mentioned this, that it's an ADA-accessible home, and we're starting to do a little bit different things beyond tradition, that building the homes kind of that are targeted for that senior citizen population, which is the largest-growing sector of the population in town. Then also, the rehab loan program is the other half of our application, that, you know, we're looking at doing 24 or more loans for low- and moderate-income residents with the 2017 program year. Our rehab loans, they're a viable outlet for people who aren't bankable, that can't get traditional lender financing. And for the current program year, that begin on April 1st, that we've already brought 155,000 of loan money to the table, and our entire salary support contract this year is for $15,000. So just mentioning that, that we bring a lot of leveraging to the table. We're good stewards with all of the resources we receive for our rehab loan program. We have a low delinquency rate on the program, it's under 2% right now. Our buyers are highly educated, and I think that coincides with the low delinquency rate, that not only do we have the pre-purchase education, we have a post-purchase class now where the homeowners are taught things with home maintenance, living in a healthy home, financial skills, and being a good steward and being a good neighbor. So we appreciate the partnership with the city over the years and appreciate the consideration for this year's request.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Any others in support of the application?
So my name is Sarah O'Bannon. I'm the Executive Director of Family Services Alliance, which is a domestic violence and sexual assault support organization for members of our community. We really provide two major types of services, one being crisis intervention and onsite response, and one being long-term healing through counseling services. And we appreciate the support of the city of Pocatello and this funding source. We've been able to make a lot of building improvements. This year, we're proposing to replace one window, which will mean that we've replaced all of the windows in our building with this funding source, and also to seal a basement storage room with epoxy. We believe that that will lead to a more safe environment for survivors. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just take this back?
Yeah, you can.
Tom Sanford, Assistant Chief, Pocatello Fire Department. I'm going to be proposing a grant to help us repair the blighted sidewalk that's in front of the fire station, too. Since the development of the Greenway, it has been getting a lot more traffic, and a lot of new houses have been built in our area, low-moderate-income housing. And I've noticed, I went over there numerous times, that people like to use wheelchairs and other limited walking devices across our sidewalk that's in bad repair and not even ADA compliant. And so I talked with Melanie about this, and she said this would probably be a good opportunity to apply for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Bauer with the Senior Activity Center, and this is our Kitchen Manager, Carolyn Folton. We are requesting positive funding to replace our combi unit, which is a large oven that not only roasts, it steams, it bakes, it does it all. It's safer because we don't have to use big pots of boiling water, because it does it all inside that oven. It cuts down cooking time. You set it and let it go. It does a wonderful job. It helps us in safety, and as you know, the senior center provides a lot of services to people on fixed incomes. The other thing this oven does, it does not destroy the nutrients or the vitamins in food because it uses much less water. It's just a multi-use machine, and the one we have is no longer serviceable. This unit costs around $10,000. So we would ask your consideration to help us out in that respect, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you make sure you get that sheet to sign and let it walk away from us? No, no, it's right up. He's got it right behind you. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Mindy Hong, and I'm the Executive Director at the Pocatello Free Clinic. I haven't talked before this group before, so I'm going to take just a couple minutes or seconds here to tell you a little bit about our organization. For over 40 years, the mission of the Pocatello Free Clinic has been to address vital community health needs, and we do that by providing high-quality health care and related services to individuals regardless of their ability to pay. We also advocate for changes that promote greater access for the underserved, resulting in improved community-wide health and wellness outcomes. Just last year, the Pocatello Free Clinic delivered $741,000 in services to uninsured low-income individuals with a budget of just $168,000. We're very fiscally conservative, and we do that by utilizing a lot of volunteers. We have over 90 medical and dental volunteers in the community that come in and provide services along with our staff. We also are a home for ISU students who are doing clinicals through their health professional This year, we want to, well, this is our first year that we've done it, but we want to request $11,000 in funding to replace the aged and unsuitable carpet that has been in place for 30 to 40 years at our building. And just to give you a little history, our building used to be the old Alameda Firehouse, and we actually rented from the city of Pocatello for a dollar a year. And I think they've been doing that for about 15 to 20 years or so, and we were very lucky to have this partnership. It is really dated on the inside. We've had a lot of floods that have gone through there. We've had some squirrel infestations through there. We've had a lot of traffic, a lot of bacteria, things are old, and we want to update it to where it meets the standards for our population and for our volunteers who are coming in. Just to let you know that even after the implementation of the Affordable Care Act, there are still almost 12% of Idahoans who are uninsured. And our population, to qualify for it, you cannot have insurance, and you also must be under 200% of the federal poverty level. About 65% of our population falls under 100% of the federal poverty level. And in Idaho, there is this gap of people under 100% of federal poverty level, there's 78,000 of them, that do not qualify for traditional Medicaid, and they make too much or they do not qualify for traditional Medicaid, but they do not make enough money to qualify to get tax subsidies on the health exchange. So we have about 1,000 people who we are serving through our clinic right now. We're a medical and dental home for them. And with that, I'd just like to ask if there's any other questions.
Thank you. Perfect, she knows how to use her timing. Mindy, would you make sure you sign up on the sheet there? Any others?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Hunt, the Public Transit Director and ADA Coordinator for the city of Pocatello. Our proposed project is to make the main bus stop for the city hall here an accessible bus stop. It's here east of us at the intersection of 7th and Sherman Street. Herefore does not have a curb cut or any other accessible features, which causes the buses to have to stop curbside, and in this instance, with wheelchair patrons, has to deploy a lift in the street. Also creates a sight hazard and other problems, safety concerns. So what we're asking for is actually some seat money. This CDBG grant money is one of the few federal sources that can match federal transit dollars. This project has kind of been in the planning process since 2012. It is in the transit investment program both locally and in the state, so it's been approved for FTA. It is a scalable project, so, you know, we can certainly negotiate what we do, anything from just curb cuts to extending that accessible pathway onto toward 8th Street or along 7th Street. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Did Dave get written down on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any of those, any testimony uncommitted to the application?
Idaho Lorax, General Litery, Pocatello, Idaho, dealing, addressing here the identified needs, or of course, I am for all of these great programs that these people work so hard in our community, and hopefully, in my running for office for this district, hopefully I can support them in that way, too. But my main concern is the things that are not addressed here. And of course, we have issues that need to be addressed with some of these programs about the rights of elderly and handicap and the abuse. Of course, I've mentioned before about that occurring. Of course, you have to, glad to see you're going to work on sidewalks projects, this is Gary Kurness has been advocate of that, sharing that information about how horrible our sidewalks are in our town. So thank Gary for that. Yes, he's out of jail, but the arrest process and the whole legal system there that motivates that is deplorable. And so hopefully, we can address that in these kinds of activities or people.
No, what it says is when you get signed, you need to go to court, just like everybody does. That's what the system says, so let's be clear.
I know, I know, but you tried in a wheelchair, being quadriplegic and all that.
He was in jail because he didn't go to court.
The court will resolve these things, yes. So anyways, other than that, of course, the Advanced Citizens Safe Cast Group, that of course isn't part of any of these organizations, we hope that was something the city would do, but we have identified the materials here, and we are uploading them.
Can I ask the mayor if he can stay on topic?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, the need, the need is to increase information for people in our public and our community.
On this topic. On the topic of this public hearing.
We're talking about the identified needs.
Of these requests.
Of these requests, of these are the only ones that are available, and I can't address them?
Those are the ones that are applied. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to address, that. Okay, thank you for sharing that with me, Steve. I hope that we can, I'll end it by just hoping that we can have some more support from these groups as we deal with the people who've been contaminated by our Targhee Caribou National Forest uranium.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Any of those opposed to the application? Okay, then Melanie, would you like to?
Not unless you have further questions for me.
Doesn't look like it, so with that then, I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Short Plat Subdivision, Martinez Estate. Martin Martinez and Matt Baker of Summit Land Surveying have submitted an application for a short plat to subdivide 725 Aspen Lane into two residential lots. This short plat is to be called Martinez Estate. Staff recommends approval subject to conditions contained in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the replat subject to conditions.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. I keep forgetting, there's only four of us up here. Agenda Item Nine, Threshold Exception Request for Neighbor Works Pocatello. Council may wish to consider a threshold exception request by Neighbor Works Pocatello in the infill housing program, allowing them to apply for program year 2017 funds through 50% of program year 2016 funds are not anticipated to be expended by October 1, 2016. Neighborhood and Community Services staff recommends approval of the request.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Paint Striping Machine Sole Source Expenditure at Declaration Street Operations. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and declare the purchase of a 2003 Mack TMT 507P airless paint truck from Traffic Markers Incorporated to be a valid sole source expenditure. The purchase price of approximately $83,000 will include delivery. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor to sign any contractual documents related to the purchase, subject to legal department review.
May I?
Funding for the purchase is available in the Street Operations Department Fiscal Year 2016 budget. Yes, sir?
Hi, Paul, good. I didn't realize you had to breathe in between.
That's right.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve Item Number Ten and authorize the mayor to sign any documents pertinent to the purchase upon legal review. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown, and before we go to a vote, I might just add to clarify that it is, the money is available in the 2016 budget. We will make a budget amendment for fiscal year 2017. We thought we would be able to get this purchased, and there were some negotiations that took us into 2017 fiscal year, and so that budget amendment will be made in May. With that, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Reflection Garden Project Caldwell Park. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding the construction of a reflection garden at Caldwell Park. A, approve an agreement with project developers represented by Janet Schubert for construction of a reflection garden amenity at Caldwell Park, per outlined agreement terms and conditions. B, per project developer request, direct Parks and Recreation Department staff to perform needed tree removal and park irrigation retrofit in support of the project and absorb related costs into general operations. And C, authorize the mayor's execution of agreement between the city of Pocatello and the project developers for the reflection garden project. This project request was presented at the September 8, 2016 study session. Council was supportive of the request. Pending agreement on additional project-related items noted in the study session staff report at preparation of the agreement, documents outlining terms and conditions for the project, both items have been addressed and completed.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this project request and the agreement that accompanies it on Agenda Item Number Eleven, A, B, and C. Second.
We have a motion by Council President Brown and a second by Moore. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Twelve, Professional Services Agreement, Jazzercise Pocatello. Council may wish to consider a request from Angie Dangerfield, DBA Jazzercise Pocatello, to use the Community Rec Center CRC facility to conduct a contractual fitness program. The agreement outlines compensation to the city for participants utilizing the program and CRC lease guidelines to allow Pocatello Jazzercise to use the facility.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the agreement. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Collective Bargaining Agreement for Pocatello Fire Union Local Number 187. Council may wish to approve the adoption of fiscal year 2017 through 2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement, CBA, for the Pocatello Firefighters Local Number 187, subject to legal department review. The CBA is the new multi-year contract reached during mediation. The CBA is the, is the new multi-year contract reached during mediation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the agreement with Local 187. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Orr.
I just want to say, thank you. I know that it was a tough process for everybody, and for us to get to this point, I think it needs to be publicly recognized, everybody's effort to get here. Yes, so, thank you.
Thank you. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen A and B are ordinances, Fourteen A, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 14, Civil Service Commission, Civil Service Commission for Police and Fire Departments, removing all references to the Pocatello Police Department as this department has elected to provide its own personnel, personnel administrative rules that were prepared by a joint committee of city and union representatives. Said rules were adopted by the City Council as an attachment to the collective bargaining agreement effective from October 1, 2016 through September 30, 2017, at the regular City Council meeting held September 15, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance Agenda Fourteen A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Kirk, could you please read the ordinance?
Certainly. Thank you, Your Honor. Why is my chair lower than yours?
Because it's supposed to be that way.
All right, I just wonder.
Dean's legs are shorter.
Dean's legs are shorter than your legs.
All right, I'll read this with apologies to everyone who has attempted to teach me the English language over the years. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Chapter 2.14, quote, "Civil Service Commission for Police and Fire Departments," end quote, of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, removing all references to the police department as this department has elected to provide for its own personnel administrative rules adopted by the City of Pocatello, by the Pocatello City Council on September 15, 2016, providing that all other sections of Chapter 2.14 not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
Thank you. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen B, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 42, Wireless Communication Towers and, Towers and Facilities, WCF. The proposed ordinance places the city in compliance with the federal legislation known as the Spectrum Act and contains charges permitting and sitting, setting and permitting of the wireless communication facilities. Said code modifications were presented to the council at the May 12, 2016 study session, and the public hearing before the City Council was held on September 15, 2016. How would you like this?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance Agenda Item Fourteen B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Adamson. Kirk, could you please read the ordinance?
We got to vote on that first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't read it yet. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Kirk, could you please read the ordinance now?
I will try, Your Honor. I think there's words in here that aren't in English, but I'm told that we mean them.
I mean them.
Just act like you know what they are, and they'll never know.
Yeah, not me. Not a good actor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, revising Title 15, Chapter 42, quote, "Wireless Communication Towers and Facilities," end quote, of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, more particularly by adding, deleting, and modifying definitions within the code, creating three, three types of wireless communication facility permits, each with their own requirements, review and approval processes, establishing new regulations for modifications or collocations of antennas, DAS, and small cell towers, tower sharing and preferred locations, providing regulation by zoning districts and land use of process for wireless communication facilities, by conditional use permit, and establishing exempt facilities, providing that all other sections of Chapter 15.42 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Brown.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Fifteen, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is three minutes per person and 15 minutes total.
Idaho Lorax, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho. What I want to deal with today, of course, is again, the safety in our community, safety all the time, safety first. Basically, SafeCast, Citizen Scientist, has uploaded data, has done readings, has, basically, we're looking at, maybe we should change our sister city in Japan from Imawaza to Fukushima because our readings are basically the same. It's like you're living in Fukushima. So, at least we're identifying with Japan. A sympathetic way. So, in regards to other issues, of course, of SafeCast, putting the tools into people and citizens as well as scientists like myself, that our national forests were also contaminated with the uranium materials here, and we have put out warnings for all citizens in this area, anglers and hunters, not to go into the forest to breathe the dust, to protect themselves, and not to carry any mud back into Pocatello with this material. So, we wish that the city does entertain, I want to put it entertainment, but this issue is very serious, contaminating our national forest lands, and of course, a lot of people want to know, and a lot of people want to know where the source materials came from because it was by state-federal agreement not to use this materials in those ways. And so, I'd like to be aware, please don't go out in the national forest, take Targhee Caribou National Forest, because I care about your health, I wouldn't want you to die too young. You have, some of you have children, like Steve, and so, care about your future, and I do, too. So, learn, support the investigation, support the source of the material, because I've already begun it in Pocatello issue, and so, we want to make sure Pocatello has a clean slate and did not contribute to that material there. Thank you. Have a very nice day.
Thank you. With that, we, that's the only one we have for the agenda. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Council, for your, your attendance and your work today.
I hope you.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.
I hope you is photo Jenny.